But you can talk.
No, go ahead and talk.
It's just recorded. We're post everything.
It's like everyone listens to you.
You sure, Dr. Doc? Not very interesting.
I think I'm a substitute teacher.
He said he wants to start substitute teaching.
I have a degree.
Pretty crazy.
Please join me in pledging allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Mr. Lautermilke?
Here.
Ms. Alsop?
Here.
Ms. Wager?
Here.
Mr. Thacker?
Here.
Ms. Thees?
Here.
Mr. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Okay, just a reminder, everybody, since we're in a different setting, all these mics are live, so if you say anything, it will be recorded. So first thing we have is the correction of the Journal of Proceeding Meetings if needed, September 3, 2024 Sunshine Meeting. And that is on page 30. Take a moment to review that, and I would accept a motion when ready.
Mr. President, motion to approve the minutes from the September 3 meeting.
Is there a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Wager, second by Councilperson Norris. Is there any question? Hearing none. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Motion carries. We have a 6-0 vote. Erin, did you need to recuse yourself?
I need to abstain.
Okay. Okay, one abstention. Okay, so the next one we have is September 10, 2024 meeting, and it is on page 35. Take a moment to review those, see if there's any corrections needed. Not, entertain a motion. So, the Thacker? Yes. Move to approve. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilperson Lautermilke, second by Councilperson Alsop. And any questions?
I will need to abstain on this one. That was the meeting I had to leave.
Okay. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, which is one abstention. Okay. Moving right along. Communications, elected officials, other officials, or agencies of the county. If anybody would like to speak at this time, those, please come to the podium. Okay. This is not the public comment. This is just the county officials. Mr. Southern, we'll have you. We've got a part for you at the end. Okay, communications are under letter of support for mainstream media. So if you look in your packet, this was presented at the county commissioners' meeting. And have you guys taken action on that yet, the county commissioners, for mainstream media? Letter of support?
No, not yet.
Okay. I sat there at that one, and since we are timing when we only meet monthly, I asked that it be included, the same copy of the letter be copied on this. And so what it is, they're looking to do 145 miles of fiber optics, and 95% of it would be paid by a bond. The other 5%, what was it going to be covered by?
They'll be paying for that from BEAD money, B-E-A-D. It's broadband. It's an acronym for something. But I want to touch on why we haven't done anything yet, because we're waiting to meet with Joint Josh Warner to see if they're applying for it locally, because they're a local company. So once we have a meeting with them, then we'll reach out with mainstream. So I don't think two letters of support would be bad. We also want to make sure our locals are having the opportunity to bid as well.
Yeah, so there you have it. There's a little summary of it. So it is on page 4, and this board can either decide to give a letter of support or they can decide not to. Just I wanted to push it forward to the council for whatever you all wanted to do on this. Anytime we can do this, get more people, I think it was 1,700, 1,700 of 145 miles of fiber, mostly in the southern part of the area of the counties. Is there any appetite to do anything on mainstream media?
When does that need, when do they need that?
They didn't look like there was a timeline on it, but I just thought since we weren't going to be meeting for another month, that we would look to do this.
The grant opening has not even been presented to anybody across the state yet. So right now, they're just trying to do their due diligence to get letters of support.
Are they the only entity that's?
So far, the only one that's.
So far, yes, ma'am. Yep. Like I said, I don't think it's a bad thing. We'll all probably give a letter of support as well as commissioners, but we just want to make sure Josh has an opportunity to do so as well.
So Commissioner Schweitzer, do you think it would be in our best interest to move on a letter until we know if the local entities in the process as well?
My personal opinion, I would hold off for right now. And so we can look.
Have we spoken to Joint?
Working with R.J.O. Solutions to get a meeting with Josh. Josh is all across the state of Indiana in the Midwest right now, so we're trying to get a time to come together. But I would say the next couple of weeks or so.
That's fine. We don't have to take any action on it now. I just brought it, just put it on the agenda.
What do you think, Travis?
What's up?
Do you think we should?
I think we should wait. I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to get some reference from Joint.
I think we should just wait and bring it up and see.
Yeah, this is just something that came out of the AIC, and Mr. Redd had talked to me, reached out, and said that they were doing this. Okay, so no action at this time. Okay. Let me go to the next item we have. So the next one is a report of committees. So we have, normally at this time, I would ask for the Budget Committee, but we have a Budget Committee presented, and they're going to have an opportunity at that time to speak on it, unless you have anything. Vicki, you want to talk about under the committee, or you want to do it under the?
I'll talk to that in the Budget Committee, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on report of committees? Okay, hearing none. Resolution ordinance is other than appropriation. The first one we have is the final reading of the Binding Units 2024 Annual Budget. And I believe that we're going to have the auditor, Mr. Bramble.
Okay.
Address that.
Yet ordained by the Vigo County Council that for the expenses of the Vigo County Solid Waste Management District.
What else we got?
Terre Haute International Airport, Honey Creek Fire Protection, Nugoshun Fire Protection District, Lost Creek Fire Protection District, Riley Fire Protection District, Sugar Creek Fire Protection District, and we can do the, throw the Vigo County Capital Improvement Board of Managers also. For the year ending December 31, 2025, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds of the herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the aforementioned taxing units, property tax levies and property tax rates herein specified are included herein in Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. These ordinances for resolution shall be in full force and in effect from and after its passage and approval by the Vigo County Council.
Okay, now at this time, then, we'd have to have a motion to accept the reading, right? Or is it just?
No, except when you'll accept the budgets for those.
Once we accept the budget, so we don't have to need to action on this. I should have asked that before the meeting. My apologies. So, okay. Any questions on that for the auditor? Okay, the next item is the final reading of the Capital Improvement Board Budget 2024. And it's on page 20 of our packet.
Vigo County Capital Improvement Board Budget shows total receipts of $4,475,000 and total disbursements expected of $4,203,197.
So on this one, and I talked to Commissioner Schweitzer ahead of time, that's a nice trend that we have, more on the revenue than we have on disbursements. So that's a good deal on that, that we had through the, the better checks. So very good. Any questions on the CIB 2025 budget?
Commissioner Schweitzer, you were indicating that that was a reflection of good business at the Convention Center. Is that correct?
Yeah, good business and great tourism here for Vigo County as a whole. A recent panel hosted all of our entities within Vigo County that are in hospitality and all those things. And we had a great come-together meeting, talked about our tourism. We're ranked 10th in the state of Indiana when it comes to tourism dollars. So we're doing a fantastic job. So June, July, August, September, and this month are going to be absolutely crazy when it comes to food and beverage revenue, because we have so much going on, so.
So if there's, if no other questions, then we would require a motion on this and action to pass this.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Just do the total? Oh, each unit separately?
Oh, okay. That's, that's, are you talking on the CIB, or are you talking on the binding?
Both of them, the binding units and the CIB.
That's what. Okay.
That's a red.
So do we want to do that in conjunction with the final reading of the county budget first? Then do each one of them individually?
You can do it either way, however you speak.
What's the pleasure?
Let's go ahead and get them done.
Go ahead and get them done? All right, so Karen, if you will, make sure, navigate through, make sure we don't miss any on this. So if we start on our page 6, the first one would be the Vigo County Solid Waste District, I believe. So entertain a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget for the 2025 year for solid, special solid waste management, $440,200.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Thees, second by Councilperson Wager to make a motion to approve Vigo County Solid Waste Management District. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I was going to see if there was another one back here that we did for. Sir?
I think that's the first one.
Okay. All right, page 7 then. Page 8. So that, page 7 is the one approving that. So then we look at page 8, and we have the airport. So entertain a motion on the Terre Haute International Airport budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion approves. Motion by Councilperson Lautermilke, second by Councilperson Alsop. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next one, page 10, Honey Creek Fire Protection. Entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilperson Lautermilke, second by Councilperson Alsop. Is there any question? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Page 12 is the Negotiation Fire Protection District. And you're going to hear a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilperson Lautermilke.
I'll second.
Second by Councilperson Alsop. Any questions? All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Page 14 is is the Lost Creek Fire Protection District. Entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Lautermilke, second by Councilperson Alsop. Any question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Page 16 is the Riley Fire Protection District. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion approved by Councilperson Lautermilke, second by Councilperson Alsop. Any question? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Page 18. Okay, Sugar Creek Township Fire Protection District. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilperson Lautermilke, second by Councilperson Alsop. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next one would be the Vigo County Capital Improvement Board, page 20, that we just heard. Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilperson Wager, second by?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Thompson. Any questions? All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we move on to, back to the agenda. And this one is the final reading of Vigo County 2024 budget, page 22. I believe we'll start with you, Councilperson Wager.
Okey-dokey.
She was the acting chairman on the Budget Committee.
Well, this was a task, we were tasked with the chore of putting together a budget this year. And we had included in our job the idea that we needed to deal with the overcrowded jail of our new jail. And we, and our community corrections director, Bill Watson, had come up very conveniently with some, a federal or a state grant to give us the money, seed money, to build an expanded community corrections facility. And so we needed to conglomerate the money to build that building so that we could get the folks out of, keep folks out of the jail who really should not be there and to continue to work, but be supervised and so forth. And with that task, we started in on that budget for next year. And it was a real chore to set aside that money and pay our employees money that they deserved and pay our bills and tear down the old jail and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And tried to figure what inflation was going to be and so forth. And so we had many, 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 many meetings. And our budget committee was Marie and David Thompson and myself. The auditor's office was just stellar, absolutely stellar. And we worked early in the morning, and we worked in the evenings. And I've got to say that I don't, I think, I don't know if Cheryl went totally crazy or not, but I think she's been in remedial care, and she seems to be doing pretty well. And so I think we have stretched it as far as we can stretch it. And I'm going to ask David Thompson to explain what we've come up with. He carries a badge and a gun, so I thought he might be the perfect guy to explain it to all of us.
All right. Highlights are salary increase of 3% across the board and increasing the current longevity schedule by 25% for a maximum of $6,250 for general employees at 26 years. And a maximum of $7,813 at 26 years for dispatch. Dispatch is on a different schedule. Longevity for the sheriff's department stays as it was. It is based on a percentage of their salary. Part-time correctional officers, jail and juvenile went to the 2025 current hourly rate as a current full-time hourly rate. Building security was already at that point. Prosecutors and public defenders were giving, given interns for a total cost of $15,502 for each department. No new full-time positions were given. Sheriff's Department merit deputy salary was increased to a base pay of $65,000. No new deputy positions were given. No new positions were given countywide. Process servers were increased to $17 per hour. Some of the purchases, vehicles for area planning, building maintenance, and Harrison assessor as long as the jail, as well as the jail. Extra towards Judge Ready's Court for the Family Recovery Court. I think that was $200,000. Subsumed to the public defenders for the System Navigator Grant that she currently has. Other things that come into this, the budget, I think, is roughly $4.3 million over revenue. Of that, insurance increased 28% this year. So in that portion, $1.6 million is insurance. Salaries consist of about $2.1 million. And in the 2s, 3s, and 4s, it was only increased by roughly $690,000.
$690,000.
Moving forward, some things that were discussed, group homes. Will probably be a discussion next year, what to do with that. What else was there? One of the big things that we talked about for several meetings, the court's request. I think one of the issues was that, was the, with that was the pay grade jump. It was going several different pay grades, and we were trying to determine how we move forward with every other department, if we made that jump. I don't know. Is that pretty much touched? Is there anything else?
Can you talk about the deputy retirement?
Yes, ARPA was given earlier this year, I think roughly $350,000 to go toward deputy retirement, once they retire. For insurance, I think up to, what, at the age 65? 65, I think. That did go through with the ARPA. And there's $200,000 to, in the 2025 budget. I don't know if there was anything else that stands out right now.
Something else that we talked about too, as we move forward, and you know, we could have new council membership and some changes, of course. And I think repeatedly we said it, and I know it's something I realized three years ago. We had discussed that there needs to be a little bit more of a process and probably something that would help all departments is a system, sorry, I'm losing my voice. Is a system of purchasing some of the things that all departments carry. And so whether that be like a look at some sort of responsibilities, and we don't know exactly where or how, but it's something that we've definitely discussed. Someone that's a point of contact for purchasing, just a great example, was when we purchase anything with technology. Some of that's being done out of department funds, and it's hard for our IT to know who has what, is there duplication? Should we use our funds better? Even contracts for things like copiers and so on. So there was discussion about that. And looking forward, but also how to move forward on discussing some sort of policy or procedure on if we do have questions about how to readdress positions and so on. I think we're going to have to have some sort of policy in going on that. So again, I think this will be moving forward with whatever the council is in January.
Thank you. And so I want to reiterate what the chairman said on the Budget Committee. I, having served on the Budget Committee before, it is a long process, but it is the crux of what we do as this elected office. Budget is the main focus. And in that, I want to thank the Budget Committee for their efforts. I know people have taken off work and trying to schedule that as a, as a big task. Also, the auditor's office, I want to thank them. And with us, all of us have been provided this summary on that, and we have been provided this book. If anybody has any questions for Cheryl regarding the book that you have in front of you, or if, or David, that's, but we do have, there's a lot of information here, so. At this time.
The auditor's office is available. The auditor's office is a book to look at, too.
So if, if this time, if anybody on the council have any questions for the audit, the Budget Committee, if it'd be appropriate.
Sure. So there's discussion about part-time pay being in line with full-time pay for a few positions. Was there any discussion about in the future having part-time pay across countywide departments being at full-time rate? For part-time employees being at a full-time rate? I know that's been a challenge for some of the department heads in the past to get part-time work, just because the rate of pay was so much less than that of full-time pay.
Right. And I know we addressed it with the parks on an appropriation level, but I wasn't in all the budget hearing, so did the?
It's an excellent point. And part of what we looked at in addressing the ones that we did, it was the need situation, we're not filling those positions. I don't think it had been brought to us, but I think that's something that could be considered definitely as we move forward. If we need to change it in the upcoming year, we can. And we still have the ordinance to come up in November, so.
That's a, that's a good point. Do you want to expand on that any?
And the other question I had, it's my understanding the request from the courts was not honored. Was there any discussion about what the fix may be for that request moving forward?
You and the Budget Committee want to address that?
Well, I think, you know, we set, we set rates that we thought we could afford. We received notice that they have intention to sue us for their pay, and I think we're just going to proceed with, you know, what they decide they're going to do. So.
So is that, I guess that's the answer, that's our fix, just wait and see what happens with the?
No, I mean, we set the, we set a rate that we hope is a fair pay for them. You know, and, you know, we paid Baker Tilly to set grades. If we change grades for the court reporters, you know, it's a certainty that another department will come in and they want their grades changed. I mean, you know, we hired a professional firm to come here and grade employees. So do they grade employees, or do we grade employees? Do we get our money back from Baker Tilly? If they, you know, why do we, why do we get Baker Tilly to grade them? And then the, why didn't the judges complain about that to Baker Tilly? You know, they didn't complain to us about it, and we weren't involved in it. So, you know, that put us on the horns of a dilemma. So, you know, that put us on the horns of a dilemma. I just, I just didn't feel like we were qualified to override the expensive system that they set up for us. So they, you know, that.
I think it's fair to say that we, we got the second confidential letter on Thursday. Karen, I believe that you sent out notification right at the end of the day Thursday? Is that right? Or was it Friday?
It was Friday.
It was Friday, right after you guys had your last budget meeting. Okay. So they, we received the last one asking for a meeting. Our attorney, who you see is not here today, had a scheduled vacation. And so he reached out to the courts and they agreed to wait until he got back and then we'll, we will be having a meeting. So I think it's a fair question. And I think that we'll learn more about it. I only learned about it after the fact because I was not there Friday when we got the, the letter.
In the afternoon.
In the afternoon, yeah. And right as the attorney was getting ready to head out of town. So I believe that we're, I don't think it's done. Is that, is that a fair statement that I think there's going to be? But for the budget purposes, to have to do it, they'd already met and already made a decision what to do on the recommendation. The Budget Committee had made a recommendation, I believe. And that's what we have here in front of us, the 3% that you said, and increasing longevity 25%. That's factored into this budget in front of us.
One, one of the things, and, and we debated about it quite a bit and got feedback too, and even how to look at it. And, and I cannot tell you how many different scenarios. You know, I appreciate Cheryl plugging into her spreadsheets and us looking at all options. A big question mark that hovers over all of us is no matter what, we're having a change in our state government too that could change procedures and policies that impact us as well. It's also one of the reasons we did a few more expenditures because we had the ability to do that on some of the things we bought with the two, threes and fours. But in addition to that, and looking at that, I think, I, and I know quite a few of us appreciate people who are loyal to staying with the county and staying in different positions. It brings experience, it brings knowledge, the collaboration. And so I believe that is, you know, not just for the courts, but that goes for any department. Why we looked at extending the pay grade on longevity. You know, it doesn't solve the answer, but I think it does recognize that we are fortunate to have people who love working for our county and who are proud to be a part of it and to work with it. In addition to that, the amount, and I know we shared this, but is it been since 2011 we've supported with the insurance? Jim, do you know what the year was? Since we've been contributing the price difference in insurance? Yeah, I don't know if the commissioners know because I know that was something years ago. But it is one of the things that is hard to see when you look at your paycheck to realize how much the, the county has contributed towards insurance. And it's, it's one of those things that, you know, you see your amounts and I, and I get that. But it's significant for those of us who have, who have had to deal with pay increases, we know that. And so that's another factor that I don't know that, that people can see the contribution that we've made in that. So I ask that people keep that in mind as well. It's been a big expenditure.
Sure. Any other questions of the Budget Committee or the Auditors? I believe that this time on this agenda, entertain a motion on the, the final reading of Vigo County Budget, 2024 Budget. Yeah, motion.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I just, I ask if there's any, or from the Budget Committee or the Auditors. Hearing.
I've got one more question.
Okay, great.
The longevity, does it go on for the new hire list too, right?
Yes.
Did you hear that? You agree with that? David, do you agree? Correct that the reinstatement of longevity, because it was suspended at the time?
Correct.
We did it.
And also I remind you, if we do not pass the budget, we will not have, we will not have a levy.
We don't take action before the end of the month.
Before the end of this month.
Yes.
Mr. President? Can I, I just want to remind the council too, this is your approving the budget with the appropriations, which what you had recommended to put in. But you will be doing salary ordinances in November.
Yeah.
That will actually set the salaries. So I just wanted to make that.
But within this budget has been a recommendation, as David said, 3%.
Yes.
It's a recommendation.
Yes. If something does change, the salary ordinance can be done in November.
Right.
That with an additional done next year, if that be the case. But I just wanted to remind, this is to approve the budget with that.
This is as the budget is recommended from the Budget Committee on this item number three. Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 budget.
Okay. Second. Motion by Councilperson Alsop, second by Councilperson Thompson to approve the 2025 budget recommendation from the Budget Committee. Any questions as the motion stated? Hearing none? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lauterma?
Nay.
Ms. Alsop?
Aye.
Ms. Weger?
Aye.
Ms. Thies?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is item number four. It's petition to appeal the increase of the maximum levy in Lost Creek. It's on our page 25. A gentleman came and spoke to us at the Sunshine Meeting. Anybody here from Lost Creek at this time? Oh, there he is, I didn't see you.
I was on.
You're doing well.
Thank you.
Okay, here he is. If anyone has any question for him, it is on our page 25. He did address it, that it is an increase in the maximum levy by $15,000 is what your request is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for a gentleman from Lost Creek, fire protection?
I explained it pretty well.
None, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilperson Weger.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Thompson. All those in favor, oh, any questions? All those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, next item. Next item is Resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation 2024-15. It has to do with the prosecutors. I see Mr. Roberts here. This one stated is on our page 26. And I believe it's for expansion of furniture for approximately, I don't, I don't want to say approximately. $3,500.
From office supplies.
From office supplies. It's on page 26, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Roberts is here, did, very good job last week. Explain that. Any questions? And entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Thies, second by Councilperson Weger. Any questions? All in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the best closing argument I've heard.
Silence is going.
Uh, next one is salary ordinance 2024-72A. This has got to do with the park stipends. Mr. Grossman's here, is on our page 27. I believe we took action on it, but now we have to take action on the ordinance. Is that correct?
Well, it was actually both in your September book and at the Sunshine Meeting, but for some reason at the regular meeting, the salary ordinance did not get read.
Okay, that's what it was. I, I tried to explain that to Mr. Grossman. And so we still, we just have to take proper action on it. So he's here, if anybody has any questions, this is the money that was for, on page 27, it was for the superintendent, bike park manager. The money would come out, the stipend comes out of the money from the Health First Indiana Fund. It's not a direct taxpayer dollars of Vigo County. And this would get them, so if there's any questions on that, so he's here. If not, it entertain a motion. Motion to approve. Motion by Councilperson Lauterma?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Alsop. Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next one is acquisition for land. It is on page 28. This one was brought to us by the commissioners. They're here, if anybody has any questions for them. This was for a total of $225,000. It was well under the appraised value, which was brought to us at a meeting before. And this is going to be for possible expansion. It's located directly, 22 acres directly south of the current new jail. Any questions?
I just, sorry, President Thacker. I just want to stress, and I know I've done this at multiple meetings, but I want to make sure that it's out there that if we look at this for community correction or other facilities, that we have a separate entrance. I know I had that commitment. But to reiterate, as we're looking at options instead of jail, to have that, you know, employee entrance in the back that can connect the two, but that this be a separate entity. So I've had that commitment, I just want to clarify before I vote.
Yes. I believe you had a, you had a head nod from the counselors anathema.
Yeah, they have, but I'm, before I vote, I just got to have that commitment.
Okay. So I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilperson Thompson, second by Councilperson Weger. Must be, she's as close I heard of her. Is there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. The next one is Sheriff's Department. We have Sheriff Fellows here, we have salary ordinance 2024-77. Sheriff, and this is on our page 29. This has to do with the, the lame. I thought it was on 29. Oh.
Thursday, 29th. It's actually behind 30, I think. Oh, it's behind 30.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. Okay, this is for the deleting of the first sergeant position total one and adding of the sergeant position total of nine. And it was for saving of $1,500, I believe. But anybody has any questions, Sheriff Fellows?
Saving $1,500?
Savings, yes. Yeah, savings, thank you. Any questions? If not, it entertain a motion. Motion by Councilperson Thies.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Norris. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So, let me see what we have here under the, okay. Honorary resolutions, having none. Resolutions related to fiscal policy of the council, none. Point much, none. Public comment, limited, limited to items not on tonight's agenda. So at this time, anybody who have public comment, please come up and state your name and your comment. Okay. If not, none of the, oh, here we have one. I was going to say, we have three students from North High School.
We can make them talk.
Did you have any comments for your credit? But you did hear her say she had no questions and then.
Then she had a question.
Just a couple.
Yes.
Okay, name's Kevin Southwood. And I brought this idea some time back, but it was about the, the cost of childcare. And, you know, I'm not a parent, I never had no kids. So, you know, but this just an idea that I came up with. And so it was about the, the high cost of childcare, a significant problem that I hear about all the time on the news. That means there's no place in this country that's doing nothing about it. Nothing. And for somebody that's never been married, never had no kids, I think this is a fantastic idea. So you, you give all these tax abatements, whether it's the city council or the county council, all over this country, you give these tax abatements. You know, almost you pay for a building and, and you help to erect a building for, for that, for, for that corporation, free of charge. So if you're going to do that, I think what y'all do is have that, that, that place that wants that tax abatement, they're going to have to also put up a, a building, you know, just like they're going to build a big plant, they have to build a small, whether it be a metal, a pole barn, that would be well insulated. You could have the kids, they would come with their parents because they can't find no, no childcare, no place. Instead of driving all over, I have, if you'd have to go all the way across town to drop off your kids, you get railroaded, you get a ticket from a cop because you're driving too fast because the kids were hard to get into the car. Or you got, you got, you got railroaded, or there is a wreck. You're trying to, you're trying to drive like a bat out of hell. So you can get to work and because you've already been questioned by your supervisor a couple of times, you, you're going to have to do better or we're going to fire you. Well, case in point, you would, you don't have to worry about any of that stuff. You're going to work, that's the only direction you have to go. I'm going to work, my kids, my toddlers are with me in the car because they don't go to school. You know, I'm going to drop them off at, whenever I go into the gate, I'm going, I'm going to go over to the pole barn that this tax abatement was, you're given a tax abatement? You know, I have a, a place on that premises that, that they're going to erect there as well with that tax abatement for childcare. So, you know, and like I said, whenever you do something like that, the people, the employees are going to be so thankful for their employer that provides that, that they would naturally, you would have to have a mindset, you're going to be a better worker because not only have they saved you possible tickets and, and a higher risk of insurance, but they saved you time that you don't have enough of. And because all you have to do is get the kids in the car and go to work. And while you're going to work, get out of the car, go over to the building and, and they'll be there. So you would have, you would have the, the people, you know, all you have to do is have educators like for, for, for four hours out to eight hours, you'd be at work, or 10 hours, you'd be at work. And, you know, they would teach your kids for four hours of education. Well, the other four hours, they could do some, they could do some crafts. They could do some, you know, they could do some coloring, they could just watch some TV. But, you know, they could, they could learn and stuff. And whenever you're trying to teach a, a kid or something in education. One thing I did, I only had one dog in my life that I got as a pup. And I started training him, by the time he was three months old, by the time he was 18 months old, he knew eight hand signals. I could, I could have him a block away from me or half a block away from me. I'd give him hand signals, he'd stop, come, sit, get back up, come to me, heel behind me, walk beside me without a leash. And it's the best dog I ever had, and I trained him whenever he was young.
We have a time restriction on that, but I would like to, I'd say you've listened to somebody real well. Never having kids, you summarized a lot of raising kids pretty well. And they are harder to train than dogs. And I, I will agree with you on that, having a couple. But I would like Marie to rebut on what we have action, that we have the, this council has taken, working with the commissioners, we have taken some actions on childcare. I'd like Marie to address that.
And I, I think he called on me because this is something I'm, I'm very passionate about. I know Ms. Weger and I talk about it quite a bit. In the last year or so, with some of the ARPA money, we've been able to support childcare initiatives with Indiana State University and our KC program. KC program is often running at, looking at a facility that will have, it's not right next to, but it could have access to different parts of town, including getting on the bypass to our industrial park. And we're talking hundreds of, of openings, which, you know, it's going to take a while, but we're getting there. Part of that too is with Indiana State University, the goal being that it's on campus, not only central location, because anyone can take their children there, but also that you are preparing students for early childhood education. It can be there for the counseling programs, social work, any of the programs that work with children. And our hope is that we continue to expand. As far as requiring it for companies, you know, we get a lot of different sized companies. Some probably could do it and some couldn't. But it's definitely a question that we can ask in the future. You know, I've been fortunate, one of the places I worked did have a childcare center and it was because the school corporation had it out at West Vigo. And I cannot agree with you more that it was a lot better when I could just walk them down to it. So.
We're going to hold her at the same time, you're saying, too.
Yeah, so, but I, it's something I think a lot of us are passionate about. And, and I appreciate you bringing that attention because you have the empathy to understand what others need.
you bringing that attention because you have the empathy to understand what others need.
And I would agree with you too on tax abatements, you're spot on that.
You're exactly right.
I think you've got a lot, so you're preaching to the choir on that. So we do agree with you and we do appreciate your comments on it. And something I hadn't said yet, I, today is the beginning of early voting, so I wanted to make sure, in a closing comment, everybody make sure you get out and vote that all 28 voting, 28-day voting.
Well, listen to this, today at the annex, they voted.
That's why we're here.
314 voters.
Oh, that's awesome.
Just at the annex.
That's awesome. So hopefully, I hope you appreciate that we do empathize with your concerns.
That was a good one.
Okay, but one more time, a little bit more if I can.
One minute.
Okay. You know, you're talking about, I don't know how many openings that you have to have these kids there because what I've read in the.
It's not enough.
Yeah, there's not enough positions open and if they are open, they're too costly. So wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be a lot more prudent for a corporation to say, hey, I'm not going to price gouge my employer or my employees because it, I'm going to show how grateful I am to my employees, my employees are going to find that if I can just drop my kid off while I go to work, I would be a lot more indebted to being, showing my gratitude to my employer. So it's a win-win situation. And plus, you know, if you could, if you and the city could present this problem, because I don't have a smartphone, I'm not on computer. So if you could present that idea to other cities and counties around America and, you know, just like this, ideas are the assassination of politics. Because it doesn't matter if you're a Democrat or a Republican, you know, an idea kills all that because if you can't, if you can't beat that idea, then use it. If you don't want to use it, then what it is, I feel that you're a terrorist against trying to solve a problem negatively and all you're trying to do is to use negatives for no reason at all.
There is, there is a position already doing that that's through KC, so.
That's why, that's why we're partnering with other communities.
Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anybody else?
I just want to.
Yes.
President Thacker, remember to the county council, thank you for your action on our budget request.
You're welcome, Joe.
You're an easy part.
We never get tired of hearing that.
Can I draw attention to one event that happened last week? I'm sorry. I know, they're laughing, it's just like laughing. Mr. Grossman and I were out at, Griffin Park was out last Sunday when they had, and just to show the importance of this to not just our community, but across the state, where they honored families who were Gold Star families. Over 201 soldiers have been lost in Indiana since 2001. They have a special trail, I think that's .6 miles, that has the hero trail, that has all their images from all across the state. And it's, if you, it's fairly accessible and it's right off the main parking lot. If you get a chance to go out there, it's always peaceful and moving out there, but especially to see those and to meet some of the families who lost loved ones. I just wanted to draw special attention to it for Griffin Bike Park and all that they've done for our community, but also to help those families in some tough times.
Yeah, it's recognized nationwide that Griffin Bike Park is awesome. Any other comments? None, entertain a motion. Adhere.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Councilperson Wager, second by Thompson. Councilperson Thompson, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed, adjourned, 4:65. Thank you.